...the chance to meet informally with their elected and appointed officials. And to enjoy a wide variety of exciting and informative guest speakers. These programs are held in the Scottsdale Center for the Arts and are free and open to the public.
Good morning. I'm so glad you're all here this morning. Isn't it beautiful out? Another beautiful Scottsdale, Arizona day. We're just delighted to have you here. As a matter of fact, my resident naturalist, and I'll introduce her in a few moments, told me that there's a very unusual bird outside on the mall that you rarely find in suburban, in urban areas, a green heron. So when we all go out, we're going to have to look and see if we can spy that. Somebody said that it's been living here for quite a while, so we'll have to see. We are delighted to have you here, and as you know, we start the morning with our Pledge of Allegiance, and I have a troupe here with me this morning. Ladies, would you come up and join me onstage with their troupe leader, Beth Ayers. This is Brownie troupe, number 554, and they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Aren't they wonderful? And we're going to have them introduce themselves to us, one at a time. They've got a microphone right there. They're going to tell us their name, their first and last name, and where they go to school, and their favorite subject in school, right?
My name is Jane Buckholz. My favorite thing at school that I like to do is math.
My name is Candace Dinsbray, and my favorite thing at school is math.
My name is Heather Ann Sager. My favorite thing at school is, I, um, um, do reading.
My name's Suella Johnson, and my favorite thing is reading.
My name's Christina Matson, and I like to knit.
What's your favorite thing to study at school?
Math.
Math. That's a girl. Aren't they wonderful? Help me thank them for coming this morning. Beth, thank you, and I see Mom here this morning, too. Thank you so much for bringing these lovely young ladies down. We know we're in good hands. They're going to be providing our leadership. Twenty years from now, you'll see them up here. Thank you again, ladies. We have some special guests with us here this morning that I'd like to introduce to you. I saw Councilman Richard Thomas is here this morning. Councilman Thomas, away in the back. If you'd all help me welcome Councilman Thomas this morning. I also saw Cy Rosen, who is a volunteer on your behalf. He works on our Parks and Recreation Commission full-time. Cy, if you'd give us a big wave and let us say good morning to you. Here's Cy right here. You heard me talk about our resident naturalist, and that would be Jane Rao, who's on our McDowell-Sonoran Commission. Jane, big wave. Let me introduce to you another familiar name as you drive around town. Steve Partridge, who's been on our Transportation Commission and Vice Chair of our Budget Commission. Steve Partridge. Another name that's familiar to you as you drive around, who served on our Neighborhood Enhancement Commission. That would be Vicki Owen. Vicki, are you here? Would you stand up and wave, Vicki? She was here. She was out in the back. You know, she might be in the class that was having their picture taken. That might not be why she came in. I'd also, there are a couple of other people I'd like to introduce you to. Lolly Mann. You've seen her in the newspaper as our Transit Authority, and I know Lolly is here with us this morning. She's a regular at our Mayor Council Breakfast. Lolly, will you stand and wave and let people say good morning to you, Lolly? Lolly? Lolly, Lolly? I saw her outside. She may not have come in. Okay. Let's see. I have a member of our Board of Adjustments from twenty years ago who came and joined us this morning, Polly Ann Dretton. Polly, I'll bet you've got friends here, too. Would you stand and wave and let us say good morning to you, Polly Ann Dretton? A new friend, but a name that's going to be familiar to you, and I didn't realize that he lived here in the valley again. Let me introduce to you the former head of the AFL-CIO, Darwin Acock. Darwin, thanks for being here this morning. That's so nice. One of our partners with the city of Scottsdale is the Scottsdale Chamber of Commerce, and joining us this morning is a new hire there, but she's Executive Vice President now of the Chamber, Tanya Martella. Tanya, thank you for being here this morning. If you'd stand and say hello, give our regards to the Chamber. And I also wanted to introduce to you a friend of mine who's visiting from out of town. I'll bet you all know what that is like, but Sue has been here, visiting me from Maryland and helping me finalize my move into my new home. And will you help me welcome my friend from Maryland, Sue Hess? Sue, where did you end up? Or are you way in the back there, Sue? Sue knows, as you do, that I'm retiring and I'm downsizing my house, and my son is going off to college, so I'm going to have a little smaller house just up the road, still right off Camelback, and obviously still in Scottsdale. But I laugh and tell people that I'm sort of jobless and homeless and about to be childless, and since I'm not going to be mayor anymore, friendless, right? But other than that, I'm doing just fine. This will be one of our final Mayor Council Breakfasts with me as your mayor, but I'm so excited, and you all know that. We have been able to do some fairly extraordinary things, I think, this last four years, having to do with arts and culture, and that wouldn't surprise you, sort of being the arts mayor in my long history and association with the arts. But I had the great pleasure to be able to appoint our first-ever poet laureate in Scottsdale, and his name is Jeffrey Platz. Jeffrey's name is not unfamiliar to you. He's a self-described... Come up here, Jeffrey, so they can take a look at you while I introduce you. Jeffrey is a self-described, but anybody who knows him longer than ten minutes would know that everybody would think of him this way. Earth advocate, author and columnist. You've seen his writings, and also, as I said, Scottsdale's first poet laureate. Jeffrey's first work under his new title is a poem saluting the next millennium, our millennium, Ode to Two Thousand. He has proclaimed his mission as the following: "To bring to citizens everywhere a deeper appreciation of the power and curative nature of literature and the poetic word." This appointment is appropriate because of Jeffrey's passion, not only for literature, but also for desert preservation, a passion that you know is shared by our Scottsdale citizens. Through his public speaking engagements and his nature readings, he has given his audience a profound understanding of the beauty, complexity, and the mystery of our Sonoran Desert. Jeffrey is also the author of Trek: Man Alone in the Arizona Wild. That's a wonderful collection of essays about his solitary hikes in the Sonoran Desert. This book has won praise from a wide range of readers, from historians and poets to environmental activists. He's also known in the valley for his dramatic readings. He has appeared for fourteen years at the Care Cultural Center just up the road here on Scottsdale Road to read classic Halloween tales from Edgar Allan Poe and other writers. And if you've not attended that, first of all, you better get there early, because people now know about that after all these years. And when you hear this voice, you'll know why people love to hear these tales from him at Halloween. He frequently performs dramatic readings of the works of a variety of authors, including Charles Dickens, the Bronte sisters, Anton Chekhov, and Somerset Maugham. I've seen him hired by some of the biggest corporations in Arizona to come and sensitize and excite and provoke their employees, bring to them the written word and the excitement of poetry. Jeffrey is very special in my life, because for whatever reason, God bless him, just over a year ago, because I've already received my anniversary of our one-year anniversary card, he decided that he was going to write to his mayor... Jeffrey lives way up in the far north reaches of Scottsdale. That he was going to write to his mayor, literally, I think almost daily, I'll bet five days a week. I would get mostly postcards, but sometimes even a long both-sides letter from him encouraging me, nurturing me, giving me other ways to think about some of the issues, the complex issues, that face Scottsdale. And they were always an inspiration and meant the world to me. And I'm going to share just a couple of the note cards that he had written to me, so you'll understand how important they were to me. On one, he wrote, "To be an artist, one must first be a man vitally concerned with all problems of social struggle, never withdrawing from life. Work must contain the whole substance of morality, not in content, but by sheer force of its aesthetic facts." From Diego Rivera, somebody that you might... That was a recent card. I scolded him, because all the plaudits that he gets, and people love this man, someone after they saw that he had been appointed poet laureate, and he maybe shared his ode to two thousand with them, wrote a line or two that said, you know, "This might be a better way to have said that." And he wrote me this whole card and shared what this person had written, and I scolded him and said, "All the things wonderful that people say, and that you would have taken the time to even say again what someone might have said to you that was the slightest bit negative." He wrote back to me, "My dear Sam..." Believe me, those cards mean a lot to me at one and two o'clock in the morning. "My dear Sam, you're absolutely right. The positive must always be given the rein to gallop by the negative." Don't you love that? Isn't that the best? Yes, Jane, I'm with you. Let's clap for that. So because I encouraged him, he also included an excerpt from a letter that he'd received, who knew he was the new poet laureate, that said, "Dear Mr. Poet Laureate of Scottsdale, congratulations. That is a well-deserved honor for you. I watched your interview with the mayor two times. It was very good, and I am impressed with your poetry. I will send Scott," her young doctor's son in Ohio, "a tape of it. It's nice to know you're being recognized for your efforts to educate us all about the importance of saving our desert." There can't be a higher calling, and for a man to translate that into poetry for all of us to understand, please help me welcome your friend and mine, but our poet laureate, Jeffrey Platz.
Well, you never know what's going to be repeated publicly, do you, Mayor? Even a non-politician would better beware of that. Good morning to you. Buenos dias. Mayor Campana's courage in creating the honorary position of poet laureate is of huge help to reigniting the power of the poetic word, particularly in an age where the jargon of commerce, of law, and of officialdom suffocates our spirits so. Hers is a great and necessary gift, not only to the essence of her city, but even more vitally, to the well-being of all that is loveliest in our language and thus in us. I have no idea where this laureate ship will lead over the two years ahead, but one thing I do know, the journey will be a joyous one. And esteemed mayor, you who have upheld the arts like none before you, may your journey come June also be a joyous one. One of the interesting things about seeking the poetic word is trying to deal with a situation where, for example, support has been so overused that the poet recoils from using it. So I did come up, I was very pleased to say, in an Oxford Universal Dictionary with the word uphold, and in looking up the word uphold, I find that it's support and more. So let's bring that one back, but of course, it will be brought back and then overused. Anyway, thank you for upholding the arts. Bless your heart. You once told me that you were not an artist but a consumer, and I really recoiled at that. I should charge you for saying that. Consumer, no. No, you have an artistic soul, and that's important. I'd like to read the ode to two thousand, which was commissioned by the mayor in the city of Scottsdale to celebrate the third millennium, which we are now galloping through already. It will be three thousand before we know it. And... I believe you all have a copy. What I tried to do was incorporate the concept of reverence for nature, which is all-important to me. That's with a capital N, nature. Remember that in your releases, Pat. But anyway, what I want to do is put together, what I did do is try to put together the idea of that with also incorporating humanity. There was a time in my younger years when I gave up on humanity and sought out nature and nature alone, which is a very understandable thing to do, but I suppose it doesn't get much achieved, because you have to deal with humanity sooner or later. So the poem tries to bring in humanity of all kinds, in all races, and some balance, if it's possible, in upholding the natural world. Citizens of Scottsdale, citizens everywhere, on the street, in the home, among the woods, beside the coast, wherever you are, raise up a toast. Greet and meet a millennium-to-be, the third thousand years A.D. Oh, hail it heartily and mark it well, though nature marks it not. 'Tis not to her but the briefest spell. People of the West, summon up your best and shout, "Hooray!" Si amigos, acantar olé! Here's to the thousand years ahead, to all its living and all its dead, to all its hopes and all its fears, to all its glory, ten thousand cheers. Twenty centuries have run. What's done is done. These last two thousand years, the good, the bad, the kind, the cruel, the glad, the sad, the mad, all have passed. At last, at last. Herbs to the Romans, polis to the Greeks, city to modern hymn who seeks in that topsy-turvy haunt of women and men his chance to tower in the halls of power. Art, commerce, and pleasing things that do divert, all are here in this desert realm with a distaff mare at its helm. Her city yearns to make its name. Luminary's come and go, from distant lands, unending flow of travelers searching out the sun, old soul, he that smites so pure with ever-light and bright allure. But how long's the life of name and fame? Will forever herbs and polis and city stay the steadfast same? Nothing sure, save a time on a truth, that whenever and wherever man tears nature with claw and tooth, he's doomed to slip and fail. And know again, sad tale, his rack and ruin and woe and wail. Forest, desert, ocean, sky, nature loves them each the same. Why then must man them maim or often strive to tame? Ah, folk, love the earth about you, and all shall go well, for longer years than we alive can ever tell. But if you love it not, beware. For your cities shall fall, thus has it been since time immemorial. Salute to the original peoples, the long-dwelling race with whom now we share this desert place. Their forbears, those that came before, earthwise, strong, rich with nature's law, sons and daughters of the sand. Their understanding of this land, alongside which they hardy grew, did sagely serve to bring them through. If truly humble we of now can be, their wisdom's plain for us to see in yon flickering light of many a bygone century. 'Tis a truth so old, yet plenty call it hard. Still, it's one oft spoken by the bird. Love thyself, and thou shalt love this earth. I love thyself, and thou shalt also love thy kind. Then, in loving men and women while deep caring for our earth, thy sweeter, higher, nobler self will come to know its birth. The ancients say, "The millennium has other meaning deep, the thousand years of peace, when woman and man will glad make lordly leap, and chained in black, black pit will frightful evil keep. And good and greatness shall prevail, an age of gold without travail." Poet Tennyson's lines, writ down an age ago, said it brave and said it so. Ring out the old, ring out the new; ring out the false, ring in the true. And more, wrote he, to hearten thee and me. Come, my friends, tis not too late to seek a newer world. The poet sees beyond the gates, and through them a fresher world awaits. So each of you, all of you, hope for it, thirst for it, pray for it, pen poems for it, dream it into being. Make sturdy the foundation for a newly-born nation. City, world, young and old; city, world, timid or bold; city, world, dark or pale, no longer dumb, no longer stale, no longer numb, no longer frail. Fathers, brothers, kith or kin, sisters, mothers, forget your skin. All races in all places, here to world's end, each to the other calls out, "Friend." Millenarians all, heed well this call. Go forth, lion hearts, with might and mane; go forth, bold souls, attain, attain. I'd have to get you a copy of these for your archives for the library you're going to build. This one is written as a result. In a sense, the Mayor Campana and the city have rendered me a personal failure, because they've sent me into an area that certainly I've touched on. You know, certainly I've written poems, but I've never... I suppose I've never applied myself to it. So suddenly, because of the royal command performance, because of that and the ode, and the realization that it is possible for me to write one, basically, we all need that, I've started to go out into particularly the conservation areas, which I've always been interested in, but it's just a different way of expressing myself. You know, I was always, as Mayor Sam knows, I've always been, in the eighties, terribly strident and very loud and raucous in the letters and, you know, Old Testament prophet-type thing. Well, fortunately, no, I'd never regret that for a minute, say that. But you get to a point where you can write so many letters, and then you end it, and suddenly, the stridency that you see in others, you want to criticize, and then you remember you were that person themselves. I'm thinking of the Sonoran, you're the favorite. But anyway, so suddenly, the idea of going into verse, I thought, if I'm going to do it, I have to have a fresh medium, and it's got to be verse. So in a sense, the mayor took me into, by offering me this appointment, took me into a realm which is very exciting. This one was written fairly soon afterwards, and I'd like to dedicate it to Jane Rao, who's sitting up there in the audience with her desert crown of thorns, slightly a tilt, but nonetheless. And she has probably worked harder than anybody I know, for longer than anybody, including herself, to save the land, so I'm going to dedicate this one to her. It's really for the... It's for the MSLT, and I did send it to Carol Shat. Do you know Carol, by the way? Probably do, of course you do. She wrote that lovely poem back that I sent you, didn't she? But anyway, I sent it to Carol. I said, you know, "Use it. If you can use it in anything, more than the newsletter, if you can use it as fundraiser, if you want to use it, go ahead." Mountains, named by man, McDowell. Crests, dales, breasts, veils, springs, wings, all manner of gladsome things, made with nature's trowel. From below, from above, made with love, and yet more love. Last valley refuge of our natural world, huge, beauty unfurled, place of power for the tiniest flower. Still wild, still fresh, as a child, beguiled are we below, and made aglow by this desert range of peace and bliss. But if we save it not, it's got to die. So we must try, you, 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 and I, to set aside with pride each last inch, nor will we flinch. We must hear the call and give our all. This noble, up-flung land, how great, how grand. Jane, I'll leave this up here. Take it away with you afterwards. I've got... We've got to run afterwards. I thought that I'd seize this opportunity to... Found a speech that I gave on Earth Day ten years ago. It was a grand turnout. Does anybody remember Phoenix Earth Day, April the 22nd? There were thousands there, and I was staggered by it. I thought, "This is it. This is the great turnout." Fifty thousand people showed up at the Capitol Plaza. And you know, in my idealism, I thought, "This is it. It's the great turnaround." Well, of course, these things come and go, and certainly things happened and happened before that, but I kind of fizzled out, but it was very exciting. I read it because it's fresh, in the sense that it never goes stale, and that it incorporates the poetic dimension. And I don't know if I've sent you a copy of this, but once in a while, as you will, we like speeches that we give, don't we not? Once in a while. Not always, but we really like a speech, and when we do, presumably, it's good, I would think. We are all here today to celebrate the earth and to give joyous reaffirmation of our love for the land. Let us one and all and all together use this special day as a stepping stone to higher things in defense of the earth, which my late friend Edward Abbey called "The only home we shall ever know, the only paradise we'll ever need, if only we had the eyes to see." Scientists study the earth and give us knowledge of the mind. Poets write about the earth and give us beauty of the spirit. I'd like to share some of that beauty with you. Scottish John Muir, savior of the Californian redwoods and founder of the Sierra Club, said, "Everybody needs beauty as well as bread, places to play in and places to pray in, where nature may heal and cheer and give strength to body and soul alike." And William Wordsworth, perhaps the greatest of the nature poets, spoke of the natural world's healing power and soothing disposition in this way. And this prayer I make, knowing that nature never did betray the heart that loved her. 'Tis her privilege, through all the years of this our life, to lead from joy to joy, for she can so inform the mind that is within us, so impress with quietness and beauty, and so feed with lofty thoughts, that neither evil tongues, rash judgments, nor the sneers of selfish men, nor greetings where no kindness is, nor all the dreary intercourse of daily life. nor greetings where no kindnesses, nor all the dreary intercourse of daily life shall air prevail against us, or disturb our cheerful faith, that all which we behold is full of blessings.'" That was made for you, that was. That was from Tintin Abbey, 1798. It was written over 200 years ago. And Lord Byron, another of the inspired romantic poets, wrote, "There is pleasure in the pathless woods; there is rapture on the lonely shore; there is society where none intrudes by the deep sea and music in its roar; yet I love not man the less, but nature more." My own life has been deeply affected by Albert Schweitzer's philosophy of reverence for life, which he summed up in this manner: "A man is ethical only when life as such is sacred to him, that of plants and animals as well as that of his fellow man, and when he devotes himself helpfully to all life that is in need of help." Including barrel cactuses, Diana. Fallen barrel cactuses. Saint Francis of Assisi, the patron saint of ecology, knew and lived this reverence for life centuries ago. And so did Michael Naomi, Lebanese poet and contemporary of Khalil Gibran. He urged this: "Approach in reverence all forms of life; in the least significant is hid the key to the most significant." Lovely line, that is. What wisdom. "All works of life are significant; life does not busy itself with useless trifles. To issue from the workshop of nature a thing must be worthy of nature's loving care and most painstaking art; should it not be worthy of your respect, at least? Or, as a Hopi saying goes, 'Earth gives life and seeks the one who walks gently on it.'" It is time for us to walk gently on our earth, for up until now our tread has been a heavy one. We must begin, as the Navajos say, "To walk in beauty." The earth and all its life forms will be the gladder for it, and so will we. By our walking gently, nature will be given back her eternal right to fulfill her own destiny, and humankind shall know the reward of a just, safe, and sustainable planet. 'Come, my friends, tis not too late to seek a newer world,' cried the poet Tennyson, and he was right. But our voyage of caring on Spaceship Earth must begin today, and our present role as complacent passengers must become that of eager crew members." I'll leave you with one more verse of Wordsworth, though written 150 years ago, it is still beautifully suited to this very day: "Love, now a universal birth, from heart to heart is stealing, from earth to man, from man to earth, it is the hour of feeling." And if you come to the April 22nd Paddy and Scotty reading and spend all evening, you'll hear that again, probably. I'd like to present something to you. Martha, are you there? This is... I don't know whether it's easier for me to undo it than you because of the nature of it. Should I do that? I want you to know that this torn paper, folks, will go back to my cabin and be used as fuel tonight, so don't worry about it cluttering up the Scottsdale. It works solid... What do you call it, waste stream? Would you like to read it? Let me tell you first. Just let me tell you. Ulysses... These Saksford Avenue, they never wrap them up well enough, do they? When Ulysses returned from his ten years, when he returned from his ten years of wandering and battles and blood and circe and all these strange creatures that he met on the way, he settled down the kingdom of Ithaca and essentially grew old there, reclaimed his wife from thousands of suitors, or slew them all, I think, then settled down. But after a while, as Tennyson pursues it, he got bored because, you know, he'd been a man of action all his life, and just sitting on a throne and administering to people grew wearisome after a while. I'm sure you can relate to that. No, no, you always enjoyed it. But anyway, so what happens is, he... The poet Tennyson assumes that the king, the old king, is ready for one more voyage, and it doesn't matter if... To get all the old mariners, they're all old now, but he wants to take them on one last voyage and go for broke. It doesn't matter if they're washed down, maybe they will be. He just wants to go that way, which, interestingly enough, was done by an American writer called Ambrose Bierce, who wrote short stories. Ambrose Bierce was pretty well-known for his short stories in his day, and at the age of 70, he literally flung his works down at a crest conference and flung them all over the floor, symbolically, walked away and went down to Mexico and was never seen again. And they think he was killed with Pancho Villa, that he joined up with Pancho Villa and died. So in fact, it's been done in modern times. All right. So what he's saying is, at the very end of the poem, which I'm going to read the whole part of the poem, he's saying, "You know, we may be old, but we've got one last bitterness. It's not all gone," basically, strong. So he's saying, "Though much is taken, much abides; and though we are not now that strength which in old days moved earth and heaven, that which we are, we are. One equal temper of heroic hearts, made weak by time and fate, but strong in will," the famous last line, "to strive, to seek, to find, and not to yield." There's a little bit of an... And I thought the senior centre might approach.
Well, first in my office.
First, yes, have it for a while. Yeah, have it, that's right, enjoy it, that's right.
Isn't that wonderful? Can you see how beautiful it is, too? Isn't it beautiful?
There's a bit of... Just, I'll give you a bit of Jasper. This Jasper that he... And that's an Ollieander, and of course, one of the biggest cut-and-mortains I've ever seen.
Isn't that beautiful?
Actually, you might want to take it with you, because I've inscribed it here.
I will, I will. It'll be in my office for a while.
Good for you. Thank you. How are we doing for time? How are we doing? One more read? You know, if you want to take off, you can do that, because I can get back all right. Really, believe me, I can. I won't read that then, I see. I did want to... I wanted to give you a quick story, which you reminded me in your conversation the other day. You'll know exactly what I'm talking about when I read it. It's an O. Henry story, it's fairly short. You know, if you feel you have to go, really, go, don't worry about me. I'll get up there. I know the way up there. Who could refuse to pick me up in this outfit? Okay. "The robe of peace." "Mysteries follow one another so closely in a great city that the reading public and the friends of Johnny Bellchambers have ceased to marvel at his sudden and unexplained disappearance nearly a year ago. This particular mystery has now been cleared up, but the solution is so strange and incredible to the mind of the average man that only a select few who were in close touch with Bellchambers will give it full credence. Johnny Bellchambers, as is well-known, belonged to the intrinsically inner circle of the elite. Without any of the ostentation of the fashionable ones who endeavor to attract notice by eccentric display of wealth and show, he was still au fait in everything that gave deserved luster to his high position in the ranks of society. Especially did he shine in the matter of dress. In this he was the despair of imitators, always correct, exquisitely groomed and possessed of unlimited wardrobe; he was conceded to be the best-dressed man in New York and therefore in America. There was not a tailor in Gotham who would not have deemed it a precious boon to have been granted the privilege of making Bellchambers' clothes without a cent of pay. As he wore them, they would have been a priceless advertisement. Trousers were his especial passion; here, nothing but perfection would he notice. He would have worn a patch as quickly as he would have overlooked a wrinkle. He kept a man in his apartments always busy pressing his ample supply. His friends said that three hours was the limit of time that he would wear these garments without changing them." Bellchambers disappeared very suddenly. For three days, his absence brought no alarm to his friends, and then they began to operate the usual methods of inquiry. All of them failed. He had left absolutely no trace behind. Then the search for a motive was instituted, but none was found. He had no enemies, he had no debts, there was no woman. There were several thousand dollars in his bank to his credit. He had never showed any tendency towards mental eccentricity. In fact, he was of a particularly calm and well-balanced temperament. Every means of tracing the vanished man were made use of, but without avail. It was one of those cases, more numerous in late years, when men seemed to have gone out like the flame of a candle, leaving not even a trail of smoke as a witness. In May, Tom Ayers and Lancelot Gilliam, two of Bellchambers' old friends, went for a little run in Europe. While poddering around in Italy and Switzerland, they happened one day to hear of a monastery in the Swiss Alps that promised something outside of the ordinary tourist-beguiling attractions. The monastery was almost inaccessible to the average sightseer, being on an extremely rugged and precipitous spur of the mountains. The attractions it possessed but did not advertise were first, an exclusive and divine cordial made by the monks that was said to far surpass Benedictine and Chartreuse. Next, a huge brass bell, so purely and accurately cast that it was first rung 300 years ago. Finally, and it had not ceased sounding since. Finally, it was asserted that no Englishman had ever sat within its walls. Ayers and Gilliam decided that these three reports called for investigation. It took them two days with the aid of guides to reach the monastery of Saint Gondreau. It stood upon a frozen, windswept crag with the snow piled about it in treacherous drifting masses. They were hospitably received by the brothers, whose duty it was to entertain the infrequent guest. They drank of the precious cordial, finding it rarely potent and reviving. They listened to the great, ever-echoing bell and learned that they were pioneer travelers in those gray stone walls over even the Englishman whose restless feet have trodden nearly every corner of the earth. At three o'clock on the afternoon they arrived, the two young Gothamites stood with good brother Christopher in the great cold hallway of the monastery to watch the monks walk past on their way to the refectory. They came slowly, pacing by twos, with their heads bowed, treading noiselessly with sandal feet upon the rough stone flags. As the procession slowly filed past, Ayers suddenly gripped Gilliam by the arm. "Look," he whispered eagerly, "look at the one just opposite you now, the one on this side with his hand on his waist. If that isn't Johnny Bellchambers, then I never saw him." Gilliam saw and recognized the lost glass of fashion. "What the deuce," said he, "what is whole bell doing here? Tommy, surely can't be him. Never heard a bell having a return for the religious. Fact is, I've heard him say things when a four-in-hand at poker didn't seem to tie up just right, that would bring him up for court martial before any church. "It's Bell, without a doubt," said Ayers firmly, "or I'm pilly badly in need of an oculist. But think of Johnny Bellchambers, the royal high chancellor of swell togs and the mahatma of pink tees, up here in coal storage, doing pennants in a snuff-colored bathrobe? I can't get it straight in my mind. Let's ask the jolly old boy that's doing the honors." Brother Christopher was appealed to for information. By that time, the monks had passed into the refectory. He could not tell which... To which they refer. "Bellchambers, ah, the brothers of Saint Gondreau abandoned their worldly names when they took the vows. Did the gentlemen wish to speak to one of the brothers? If he would come to the refectory and indicate the one they wished to see, the reverend abbot in authority would doubtless permit it." Ayers and Gilliam went into the dining hall and pointed out to brother Christopher the man they had seen. Yes, it was Johnny Bellchambers. They saw his face plainly now as he sat among the dingy brothers, never looking up, eating broth from a coarse brown bowl. Permission to speak to one of the brothers was granted to the two travelers by the abbot, and they waited in a reception room for him to come. When he did come, treading softly in his sandals, both Ayers and Gilliam looked at him in perplexity and astonishment. It was Johnny Bellchambers, but he had a different look. Upon his smooth-shaven face was an expression of ineffable peace, of rapturous attainment, of perfect and complete happiness. His form was proudly erect, his eyes shone with a serene and gracious light. He was as neat and well-groomed as in the old New York days, but how differently was he clad? Now he seemed clothed in but one single garment, a long robe of rough brown cloth gathered by a cord at the waist and falling in straight loose folds nearly to his feet. He shook hands with his visitors with his old ease and grace of manner. If there was any embarrassment in that meeting, it was not manifested by Johnny Bellchambers. The room had no seats, they stood to converse. "Well, glad to see you, old man," said Ayers somewhat awkwardly. "I wasn't expecting you to find you up here. Not a bad idea, though, after all, society's an awful sham. Must be relieved to shake the giddy whirl and retire to contemplation and prayer and hymns and those things." "Oh, cut that out, Tommy," said Bellchambers cheerfully. "Don't be afraid that I'll pass around the plate. I go through these thingamabobbers with the rest of the old boys because they're the rules. I'm brother Ambrose here, you know. I've been given just 10 minutes to talk to you fellows. Hey, that's rather a new design in waistcoats you have on, isn't it, Gilliam? Are they wearing those things on Broadway now?" "It's the same old Johnny," said Gilliam joyfully. "What the devil, I mean, why..." "Oh, confound it, what did you do it for, old man?" "Peel the bathrobe," pleaded Ayers, almost tearfully, "and come back with us. The old crowd will go wild to see it. This isn't in your lion belt. I know half a dozen girls that wore the willow on the quiet when you shook us in that unaccountable way. Hand in your resignation or get a dispensation or whatever you have to do, get a release from this ice factory. You'll get Qatar here, Johnny, and my God, you haven't got any socks on." Bellchambers looked down at his sandal feet and smiled. "You fellows don't understand," he said soothingly. "It's nice of you to want me to go back, but the old life will never know me again. I have reached here the goal of all my ambitions. I am entirely happy and contented. Here I shall stay for the remainder of my days. You see this robe that I wear?" Bellchambers caressingly touched the straight-hanging garment. "At last I found something that will not bag at the knees. I have attained..." At that moment, the deep boom of the great brass bell reverberated throughout the monastery. It must have been a summons to immediate devotions, for brother Ambrose bowed his head, turned, and left the chamber without another word. A slight wave of his hand as he passed through the stone doorway seemed to say a farewell to his old friends. They left the monastery without ever seeing him again. And this is the story that Tommy Ayers and Lancelot Gilliam brought back with them from their latest European tour. That rings a few bells. Thank you. Jane, don't forget. I'm going to have to rush off pretty soon, but if anybody has a question or two, or two and a half?
Is there a question for Jeffrey? I know we're right at our length of time. We have... I'll take one question right here, please.
I beg your pardon? No, Trek was written in 91, and mountains... I'll be happy to send you a copy. All I need is an address. I'm strong on mail, all right?
Yes, indeed. That would be true. I'm going to close by reminding you that the power of poetry and prose, that's part of our series at the Civic Center Library, just right across the way here, offered gracefully by Jeffrey Platts, our poet laureate, will be Thursday, March 30th, the next one at seven o'clock in the evening. Come Alive with Walt Whitman, for those of you who are fans of Mr. Whitman's. And I'll just thank Jeffrey again for being our poet laureate. We've commissioned four different poems from four different poets to celebrate the things that we're doing in Scottsdale, including one to dedicate the Pima Freeway, one for the Civic Center Mall out here, one for our new Museum of Contemporary Art, and one for the new Water Campus. But I do love Jeffrey, and he knows that.
Bless your hearts, mutual.
I'm going to... I do. I'm going to close with one of the...